And wisdom on all that are here this evening. We pray that you would grant us courtesy and respect for all those that would express their opinions. And as always, we send these prayers to you in your son Jesus' name. Amen. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Greer.
Here.
Councilmembers Brown.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Ketchmar.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Shoraki. Councilmember Frida is excused. We have a quorum.
Next is approval of the minutes from the March 16th Regular City Council Meeting and the March 18th Public Works Committee Meeting. Are there any corrections? May I have a motion? Councilman Bates.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, recommendation. We approve the March 16th, 2015 Regular City Council Meeting and the March 18th, 2015 Public Works Committee Meeting.
Second. Second from Councilman Ketchmar. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki. Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Are there any councilmember announcements? Councilman Bates.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have a General Government Committee Meeting on Wednesday, April 8th, at 4:00 PM here.
Any others? Councilman Weed.
Yeah, go Badgers.
Strike that from the record. Any others? All right, let's see. Adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Doug, will you review the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, on the consent agenda, the first item is to authorize a temporary street closure. This was reviewed and recommended at the March 18th Public Works Committee. The street closure would be to close the 400 block of Main Street on April the 18th from 8:00 AM to noon for the Orchard of Hope Pull for Hope Event. Second item is again another temporary street closure. To authorize the street closure, we reviewed this. It's recommended again at the March 18th Public Works Committee for the closure of Skyline Drive on April 26th. This would be from 2:00 PM in the afternoon to 4:00 PM in the afternoon. This is for a physical challenge event that's been held being held at several locations here in the community. And the street closure is being sponsored and the event's being sponsored by Search and Rescue and KRLN for this event. Third item is to ratify an extension of bid 2414 for Uniform Rental Service to G&amp;K Services of Colorado Springs in the amount not to exceed $2,500. We reviewed this. It was recommended at the March 18th Public Works Committee, and this is for annual rental service for various for uniforms for various city employees. Next item is to ratify an extension of bid number 70 of 13, so this goes back a couple years, for tree pruning services. This would be to Front Range Arbors of Colorado Springs in the amount not to exceed $35,000. This was reviewed at the March 18th Public Works Committee. It was recommended at that time. And this would be for providing pruning services for approximately 339 trees and extending this bid would allow us to capitalize on the lower prices that were actually quoted back in 2013. Resolution number 4 of 15, this would be if it's approved, would be a resolution that would change the address number assigned to a building located at 715 Main Street. That would allow everyone to better identify the building and the uses within the building and to provide for better record-keeping services related to this this location, this property. Next item is resolution number 5 of 2015, which is authorizing transfer of budgeted funds within the 2014 budget, just to make that clear. These would be funds within the General Fund, the Quality of Life Fund, the Water Fund, and the Stormwater Fund. And for informational purposes, this is a housekeeping item that we do at the end of each year to make sure that our budget and our record-keeping is in compliance with our charter requirements. And then lastly, we have a, nope, not lastly, we have authorized a mayor signature on a contract for specific services. This would be to the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce. Excuse me. This was reviewed at the March 18th Public Works Committee. It was recommended at that time. And this would be for additional services in the amount not to exceed $11,000 for certain additional marketing functions that the chamber will be doing. This is specifically for four events, and the maximum individual amount for each event would be as follows: Ride the Rockies in the amount not to exceed $6,000, the Epic Rocky Mountain Relay in amount not to exceed 500, the Colorado Mission of Mercy in amount not to exceed 500, and the Gentleman of the Road Stopover Festival in an amount not to exceed 4,000. Bids for this time, we have bid number 20 of 15. This is for the purchase of magnesium chloride. This would be 16,000 gallons for the Water Department to Jimco Corporation of Rifle, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed $12,352. We reviewed this. It was recommended at our Public Works Committee Meeting on March 18th. This is for purchase of material that goes on our gravel roads for dust mitigation. We had two bids that were received, and this vendor was the low bid. And lastly of our bids, number 21 of 15, traffic paint for Streets Department, Streets Division to Sherwin-Williams Company of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount of $12,732.50. This would be, this was again recommended at the March 18th Public Works Committee, for the purchase of 1,320 gallons of traffic paint, which Streets Division uses to paint our streets twice annually. This was the sole bidder of five that were solicited. And then lastly for this time, our list of bills for the last two-year period.
Any additions or corrections? May I have a motion, please? Councilman Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'd make the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented. Second.
Second from Councilman Bates. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Next is the Administrator's Report.
Just a couple items for tonight. First item is really a public information item. R&amp;L, who are consultants in Denver that we've hired to work on the Royal Gorge Park Area Plan, will be back in town next week on April the 9th, which is next Thursday, a week from Thursday, and, or actually this Thursday, sorry. And they've been working on, as you may recall, they were here about a month ago. They had some concepts for the park area. They've taken those concepts based upon input that they received at that time. They've been evolving that work. They're coming back on Thursday to present that preliminary plan work, to kind of show the community what they're coming up with as far as more advancing the ideas. They would be here at 2:00 for anyone on the city council that would like to come. What they will be doing at that time will be talking to you about water issues in that area, water infrastructure, how it would potentially get developed, timing, phasing, so on. So it might be an interesting discussion for the city council just to get educated on because obviously it's key to what happens up there in the future. At 3:30, they will be meeting with the park area property owners to kind of give them an update on the area plan and the water development issues. And then at 6:30 in the evening on Thursday night, we will be having a community meeting here where it would be open to the public. And again, they'll be making a presentation on this plan, talking about water, the things that they've talked to you earlier in the day about, and kind of laying that out for the community and getting input on that work. So that'll be, hopefully, an important discussion for everyone to be aware of. Next item is just an update on the Hogback Recreation Area, just for informational purposes. The Parks Department has now completed the Core Trail. They completed that last week. And so now, there are about six miles of trails in the Hogback area for everyone to enjoy. So hopefully, people get up there and enjoy those trails. We haven't seen quite a few people already up in that area enjoying the trails. So hopefully, that word continues to get out and people continue to enjoy these improvements. The two trailheads are almost complete. So again, things are moving forward in the Hogback area. We also have, as the council knows, we have acquired 2,500 more trees to plant up at the Royal Gorge Park. We want to try to get those in during the month of April before it starts getting, you know, too dry. City staff will be up there planting trees on Friday, the April 17th. We have a number of local school students, I think they're high school students, that'll be up there planting on April the 24th. We can sure use more people if they're interested. Please contact Rex Brady in our Parks Department, and we'll get them up there and get them planting trees. Our goal is to get these 2,500 trees planted and then possibly look at maybe 2,500 more trees maybe next year. So that's the goal. We're hoping that we can get some of these trees watered as we get them in, and hopefully we get a good take on this planting. So. Next item is just kind of an FYI for everyone. The Water Department will begin the annual flushing of the fire hydrants. They will start that next week. And just for everyone, it'll take about six weeks to complete this. So you'll see the Water Department out flushing the fire hydrants throughout the community here over the next six weeks. Next item is we had scheduled a movie exhibit at the museum. I had mentioned this before. We were going to try to get this scheduled for first opening for first Friday in April. There was a delay in receiving some of the elements for some of the displays. So the museum is going to start this on May 1st, which I think is the first Friday in May. And we think it's going to be a really nice exhibit over at the museum, and hopefully people will get out and see it. It's got a lot of historical information about local theaters, local movies that have been filmed in the area. And so hopefully, it'll be of interest to everyone here in the community. So watch for that coming in May. And last item is just kind of an FYI. I think that there are a handful of the council members that are going to be around tomorrow. Tuesday at noon, we have a city-county-city meeting over at the County Administration Building again at noon. So just a general reminder for you, and that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Doug. Item six is a public hearing for the application for a special event liquor permit from the local Elks Club. I'll open the public hearing and request a report from the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is Tony McCoy, who's representing the local Elks Club, who's applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for a one-day event to be held on Sunday, May 3rd. Notice of this publication, or this public hearing was given through posting the premises. This is an additional day to the permit council approved previously for their Blossom Festival celebration. At the time they submitted their original application for the blossom event, they did not plan to host any other events and now wish to expand to include Sunday. This event on Sunday will be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. They have identified that they will carefully check IDs at the door of these events, and those of drinking age will be given wristbands to so indicate. The club has held similar events in the past with no resulting concerns. Many representatives from this organization has attended training in the past. Upon review of this application, the fees have been submitted. The diagram meets the requirements, and the corporation is in good standing with the state of Colorado. So with that, I'd open it up with any questions you may have of the applicant.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilman Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Tony. Thanks for coming down.
How are you?
Good. Pretty straightforward here. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, sir.
And is there a copy of Liquor Code on file with the Elks Club? Okay. How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Probably 10.
And how are they trained on the Liquor Code and laws?
Those that are all familiar with the Liquor Codes will be supervising them and keeping a check on those people.
Okay. Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as future licensing? Would you like to take a moment to tell us a little bit more about your event?
Well, we're having the Saturday event for Blossom Weekend. We're having hamburgers and all sorts of stuff on the porch. And then on the Sunday, we're having a breakfast open to the public, so they can all come down and enjoy a good breakfast Sunday morning.
I have no further questions.
Any further questions from council? Any comments from the audience? I'll close the public hearing and request a motion. Councilman Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'd make the motion to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for the Elks Club for Blossom Weekend.
Second. Second from Councilman Ketchmar. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next is a public hearing for application for special event liquor permit for the Chamber of Commerce. I'll open the public hearing and request a report from the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Lisa Heims. She's representing the Chamber of Commerce, who has applied for a special event liquor permit for April 25th from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM as part of their annual tourism expo. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the location. This is one of several licensed events that the chamber has conducted throughout the last few years, from which there have never been resulting concerns. Alcohol sales at this event is being conducted as a fundraiser for the organization. They will serve beer and wine during a portion of the event. They wish to serve outside. However, should the weather be inclement, the diagram provides for a larger area to accommodate moving indoors should the need arise. There will only be one point of entry where IDs will be checked by trained volunteers, and those of legal drinking age will receive a wristband at that time. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fees have been submitted. The diagram meets filing requirements. The applicant has obtained permission to use the premises, and the corporation is in good standing with the state of Colorado. So with that, I would open it up to any questions council may have of the applicant.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilman Weed.
Hi, Lisa. Thanks for coming down.
Are you, Dennis?
You got the preview, so. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, I am.
Is there a copy of Liquor Code on file with the chamber?
Yes, there is.
How many volunteers will you be having working this event?
At the event or at the actual area for liquor?
Well, at the area for liquor.
Okay. We will be having approximately six.
And how are those volunteers trained on the Liquor Code?
They have all been trained through the city on the handling and serving of liquor. They serve at all of our events that the prospectors, that we are licensed to carry, to serve alcohol at our business after-hours and all of our other events. This is the same group that does it every time.
And are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization and future licensing?
Yes, I am.
Lisa, would you like to take this opportunity to tell the world a little bit more about your event?
Well, I'd love to. I know we've had the tourism expo before. We're working very hard to ramp it up and make it a more widely attended event. It is an event that's free for vendors and free for visitors, and we're doing our best to bring attention and awareness to everything Fremont County has to offer. We want visitors, when they're here, to stay here. Therefore, we want our frontline people within our community, our gas stations, Walmart, everything else, to know what's going on here. So this event is for them. It's not really for the tourists. It's for our community, so they know everything that's going on as far as restaurants, hotels, entertainment, attractions, rafting, and everything else that our community has to offer.
And you may know the answer, Kathy. You might. Have they applied for a liquor license for this event in the past?
No, we have not. This is the first time. And the reason we did is because we actually had a lot of people last year say, is there a place I can get a beer or a glass of wine? Because we are providing food as well.
Okay. And how many local merchants or vendors are you expecting?
I believe that we are actually expecting about 54.
Terrific. Well, I hope it's well-attended.
I hope so, too.
I have no further questions.
Any further questions from council? Any comments from the audience? I'll close the public hearing and request a motion. Councilman Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'd make the motion to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce.
Second. Second from Councilman Ketchmar. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki. Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Item made in the public hearing for the applications for a special event liquor permit for the Blossom Festival. I'll open the public hearing and request a report from the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Greg Dorito and Mike Frye, representing the Blossom Festival, who's applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for Saturday, May 2nd, in Centennial Park for their Cluster Duck event. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting a location in the park. This event in Centennial Park will be from 4:00 PM to 11:30 PM and is one of their annual events that will include various bands and food vendors as well as craft vendors. Individuals aged 21 and up will receive a wristband, and underage participants will receive a black X on their hand. Many volunteers from the organization have attended training, and the local on-watch group and off-duty officers will assist with the enforcements around the perimeter and patrolling the event. Upon reviewing the application, the appropriate fees have been submitted. The diagram meets the filing requirements. They have obtained a park use permit from the city, and the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. And they do actually do do the sales tax reporting as well. So with that, I'd open up to anything you may have of the applicant questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have some questions.
Councilman Brown.
Just in case you haven't figured this out, these are a standard set of questions that everybody gets asked, so we can get it on the public record. So don't feel special.
Understood.
Okay. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
I am.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes, we have one.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
We have approximately 18 volunteers that are going to be at the event, involved in the process of liquor handling and sales, and a total of about 35 volunteers that encompass the security and the servers.
How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
Some of our volunteers have attended the city liquor license training that they've had over the years. And then we do a pre-meeting in which we bring the other volunteers in, and those of us that have been trained review what we learned from our esteemed colleagues at the city in liquor license laws and regulations.
Great. Are you fully aware that you're responsible for compliance with Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization for future licensing?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
With these events starting up every year, we do, the city clerk's office does do a training and contacts those nonprofits for a couple times before they have their events to give them another opportunity to come in one afternoon for about an hour, hour and a half for training. So that will happen again as well with these nonprofits.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council?
Do they get an opportunity to discuss their event? Is that where this happens?
Yes. That was your final question.
Please discuss that, what happens with your event.
All right. Well, let me start with apologies to city council. Normally, shorts are not my attire for a council meeting, but I had a soccer parent running a little bit late picking up their little one. So sorry, you guys had to go in the back burner for just a minute. Our event is a fundraiser for Blossom Festival. In the past, the envisionment of what brought the Cluster Duck to fruition was locals often saying that there wasn't enough to do for locals as far as things that they wanted to do after hours if they didn't want to attend the bar. So they wanted to enjoy the outdoors. They wanted to enjoy music and maybe a cold beer. So we put that all together at the park, specifically targeting Canyon City, Fremont County residents. We keep it low-key. We keep it family-friendly. And we just encourage everybody to come out and have a good time.
Thank you.
Councilman Weed.
What is the Cluster Duck?
Well, it's a cluster of music in Duck Park, of course, Dennis. It's actually, we bring out the big tent. We have a fenced area with crafters over there. We bring in live music. This year, our bands are Jake Loggins, Donovan Lee, and then we have a young lady that was on The Voice by the name of Megan Ruger. It's going to be our headlining act. Music starts at 5:00 and runs till about 11:00. We'll have food vendors out there throughout the entirety of the event. And just we just put on an event for people to come out, enjoy a little bit of the spring and summer weather.
What's the admission?
It's going to be a, I don't have the numbers in front of me off the top of my head. I believe it's a $5 cover charge. And then we're going to be doing pre-sale tickets with a VIP pass.
Terrific.
Any further questions from council? Any comments from the audience? All right, I'll close the public hearing and request a motion from Councilman Brown. It's customary.
Sorry, I'm a new guy. I apologize. Accept the, approve the application as written?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second from Councilman Weed. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number nine is the subject of the lease or operating the Shadow Hills Golf Course. May I have a report from the administrator?
Sure. As probably everyone knows by now, the city has been approached by the Holt family about the Shadow Hills Golf Course. And we actually, I think we're, first discussed this maybe a couple of months ago. And during that time, the opportunity was presented to the city if the city would like to take over the Shadow Hills Golf Course. I think that the Holt family wanted to make this offer available to the community. I think in discussing it, you know, all the city council members and probably many people in this community feel that it's a community amenity, but is it something that we as a community or we as a city can take on? And I think that that was maybe the question. The Holt family had had made a generous offer that they would lease the golf course for very little, maybe a dollar. We haven't worked that out, but a very minor amount of money to the city. The city then would, in effect, take over the operation of the golf course, work out, either become the manager of the golf course or hire a manager of the golf course, whatever the case may be. Now, there have been a number of conversations about this. I think we've had probably at least three conversations in open public meetings up to this particular point in time. We've been, you know, presented this idea if we wanted to take on this lease. So after going through three discussions, it's my understanding, and I don't want to put words into the council members' mouths, it might be good for you all if you want to describe your own feelings related to this. But I think from what I heard at the last work session that we did have on this Public Works Committee, that the council members that were present, that generally there was a feel that, yes, it is a nice community amenity. It's a nice golf course. I think that, as we heard, it's a lot of local people that do play this. There are about 140 members or so that play the golf course apparently frequently. A much smaller amount is coming from outside of the area, which is sort of almost the opposite of what happens, for example, at Four Mile. But it is sort of a locals type of golf course. It's a golf course. It's designed for the local people to be able to play. And, but the council, I think, had mixed concerns just related to taking over the project from what I gathered. It appeared that while there were at least a few that were interested in pursuing this idea of a lease further... idea of a lease further and keeping the golf course open, it seemed that there was a majority of the council members, at least at that meeting, who believed that this might not be the best time, given everything that the council has on its plate, the priorities that it's established for taking on an additional project like this at this particular point in time. There was also, I think, some concern about the possible financial commitments that would be required on the part of the city going forward until there is some level of stability reached in the financial operations of the course. And so that's, in general, in a very, very succinct summary, what I heard. And so what we wanted to do tonight was give the council the opportunity to give their comments and thoughts on this, and then finally have a motion. If the council is interested in making a motion, it would be a motion in favor of going forward with a lease. If there was a vote in favor of that motion, that would then suggest that we continue to move forward, developing a lease for further consideration for the council. If there's a vote against that motion, then it means that no further action would be taken on the matter, and hopefully the community, we had suggested, maybe FEDC, others maybe can get together, and within the community, sort of a private approach can figure out how to make it happen. So with that, I maybe kind of turn it over to the city council and how you would like to go forward, Mayor.
Any questions, comments from the council?
I have a few comments. First of all, thank you to Shadow Hills and the Holt family for bringing this opportunity in front of council. I think it's a rare opportunity when a private organization, a for-profit organization brings an asset and an enterprise of this magnitude to a public institution for the opportunity to pursue that. So thank you very much for that. I think it's important to note that at the committee meeting, there was a great deal of discussion about the Holt's and the Shadow Hills, and it was positioned in the form of a bailout or some type of additional assistance or help that was required to pull them out of this presumed tailspin. I think that's an unfair characterization of this situation. I think it's quite simply a business opportunity that the city has the opportunity to pursue. Whether or not you're for it or against it, I think it's important that it's noted that the Holt family and Shadow Hills has played a critical role in this community for a number of years, both financially, politically, and from a business point of view, and they certainly don't need a bailout. What they have is an opportunity for this, for city council to move forward with the potential of an enterprise that would support this entire city. So regardless of what the decision is today and the vote, I would encourage Shadow Hills to continue to pursue options. And I, as an individual citizen in Canyon City, will put my shoulder to the wheel and help in any way possible to facilitate that. But regardless, please continue to pursue that because it is an asset, and no matter how you look at it, it is a piece of real estate with improvements that allow the possibility of running a golf course operation. And the prospect of any city, municipality, or the governmental organization having the opportunity to take advantage of that for a single dollar is something that can't be overlooked.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman Ketchmar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown. I think that was well-stated, Rob. And I am an advocate for the golf course. I think it's an amenity in the community that we're trying to create amenities to bring people here, particularly recreationally, and I am in favor of trying, the city attempting to help make this a reality, whether it is a municipal course or whether we help transition to a private enterprise.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman Weed?
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything that Rob or Colby said. You know, my biggest concern is that we already have a pretty extensive list of projects that we're considering and pretty short leash on most of them. And obviously, we've got limited resources, and I think venturing into the golf course puts us in a position of accepting or taking on what amounts to an unknown responsibility or an unknown financial exposure. And I get, at this time, I'm just not comfortable doing that. I certainly echo Rob's comments about what an asset it is to this community and what the Holt's have meant to this community. I just think that this is something at this time that we're not able to take on.
Any comments from the audience? All right, may I have a motion from the council? Councilman Ekstrom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to reiterate what Councilmember Brown said, that the Holt's were no, at no time looking for a bailout, they were simply giving the city the first right of refusal for a business opportunity, and I appreciate that. They came to the city first. But at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we, as city council, direct city staff to take no action towards entering into a lease at this point.
Second.
Second from Councilman Bates. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
No.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Councilmember, who do I have left? Weed?
No.
This is to take no action.
Yeah, aye.
Sorry.
That's an aye?
It's an aye.
That is a yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Approved by majority vote.
There we have it. Last on tonight's agenda is citizens' request to speak to city council.
We've received one written request to speak to council, and that's Lisa Heims. She wants to talk to council about downtown parking. Good evening again. I just would like to bring up, I've had many discussions with visitors here to our community as well as businesses on Main Street and the surrounding areas, and the parking on Main Street has become difficult. Certain blocks are more impacted than others, and because we have no patrol on Main Street of any kind for parking at this time, the abuse of the two-hour limit has really taken off. We have cars left for days at a time in the same spot. And I understand that maybe the funding isn't there to have a specific individual for parking enforcement, but I think if people knew that sporadically someone might come through once a week and mark the cars and then tick it, I think that it would allow our, the individuals coming down there to shop or to eat at the restaurants to have someplace to park. And I just would like to bring it up as maybe a consideration that some, a discussion would be opened with the police department about me maybe being able to facilitate that.
Great, thank you, Lisa. We'll put it on a future agenda.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
I think that before we do any of that, we need to hear from the merchants, because the approach that we're taking downtown is specifically at the request of the merchants. And so, you know, we left the two-hour signs up so people would see it and they may think, well, I need to move my car. We've had this conversation with the merchants here in the past that, you know, again, at their request, it's going to be good for them to sort of self-police this, so they're not parking in front of their stores and so on and so forth. So I think that if we're going to go forward with any kind of enforcement, we need to first have that conversation with the merchants, because again, this came specifically at their request.
And I would encourage that. I have had many of the merchants come to me, and I guess the biggest part of the problem is, is the individuals are not parking in front of their store, they're parking in front of somebody else's and leaving it there all day, and trying to leave open parking in front of their store.
Councilman Bates?
You might want to check with landlords downtown with the renters and pass on to the renters that it's not public parking for them.
I know, it's a difficult situation. I mean, parking is difficult. I just think we need to have someplace for the people that come to shop and to spend money to have someplace to park. I think it's important for the success of our businesses.
We hired somebody about four years ago to do that, and he did a real bang-up job. And merchants come to city council complaining real strongly about him doing a real bang-up job. That's why it got taken down.
I do believe, though, we have complaint-based enforcement, right? We're not being proactive, but if someone complained about long-term parking...
If somebody complains about long-term parking, what we typically do is go back to, we try to isolate who that person is, what property they're associated with, and we either go back to that business owner or to that landlord and ask them to try to police their own problem, if you will. So that's the approach that we're trying to take. Again, it's sort of a soft kind of approach, and that was the, again, that was a request that we had from, you know, the vast majority of the merchants downtown, and we've continued that because we've had several people come to us with, I can think of one in particular, where people were parking on Main Street and we had to work that out. And actually, they were parking in the parking lot next to the chamber as well for extended periods of time.
I have that problem.
And so we want to try to get people to take care of their own problem first and foremost. If we want to go beyond that, it's something that we can do, but we want to make sure that everybody's on board with that idea, so.
Yeah, and I say bringing it up, maybe addressing it with CCMA or something like that. I know that not everyone on Main Street's a member of CCMA, but somehow get the word out that if there's something they can do to be considerate and allow shoppers in to park, because some of the comments I'm getting are that the people aren't even coming downtown to shop because parking isn't there.
Thank you.
So I just want to pass it on.
Thanks. All right, that's it. Meeting's adjourned.